Let me share this.
I would like to call to order area heights planning commissioners meeting April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. I'd like to do the roll call, Commissioner Patel present, Commissioner Mark Collins.
President.
Commissioner Angelina Campo Biso. Commissioner Bill Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Andre.
Present.
Commissioner Don Mitchell.
He's he's here, you're muted, Don.
He's there?
Uh, he's working on it, just one second.
Okay, no problem.
Present, sorry.
I'll move on.
Audio on, audio off.
Okay, and then Commissioner Justin Davis had called in earlier to be excused for tonight.
Yeah.
So I'd like to have a motion to excuse Commissioner Justin Davis for tonight's.
I'll make a mo. Somebody. Cal, I'll make a motion to excuse Justin Davis from uh, tonight's meeting.
Another commissioner want to second it?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 And for the record, I'd like to make a note that Angelina is not present. Okay. And. Let's move to the pledge of alliance for tonight. Uh, I'll start because it does sound pretty bad when everybody is at different speed. I pledge.
Pledgeions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so that's done. And then I'd like to get a motion to approve today's uh, agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Anybody second?
Second.
Second.
Second. And then any discussions from anybody regarding the agenda? If none, I'll put it to what? Uh, if uh, if everybody approves. Aye.
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 All in favor? And then like a motion for approval of last May the eighth minutes?
I'll make that motion, Cal.
Okay. Uh, another commissioner has to second it, so either one of you commissioners can either put the motion or second it, but I do need a second before I can move forward.
I'll second it.
Okay, anybody have any discussions to the previous agenda? Any comments? If none, I'd like to go ahead and approve it. Aye.
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 All in favor? Uh. So do we, do we have anybody for public comments tonight, Zach?
Uh, we do have several members of the public possibly. Uh, if anyone has a public comment that is not related to the public hearing, can you please enter into the chat? We'll give you about thirty seconds. I'm not seeing anything, Cal, uh, we can go ahead and if there are any public comments, please just let me know via chat and we can circle back around to it.
Okay, so we'll just move, uh, we'll close them and move forward, uh, we don't have any presentations. But we do have a public hearing tonight. And I am going to go through the procedure, so basically. I just want to say that if any person wishing to speak tonight will have to give their name, address, and residence and indicate whether they're speaking as a opponent or a proponent or on a neutral position. Uh, and Zach, uh, you will look at the chat, so indicate in the chat if you want to speak, okay? And then uh, we're gonna go through the basic rules. All comments by proponents, opponents, or other members of the public shall be made from the Zoom platform in our case. Any individuals making comments shall be, shall first give their name and address. This is required because an official recording of the public hearing is made. No comment should be made from any other location except Zoom. Anyone making out of order comments shall be subject to removal from the meeting. In this case, we'll mute you out. If, if a person is physically challenged and requires accommodation, the chair shall be advised. Uh, there shall be no demonstration, applause, or other audiences participating during or at this conclusion of anybody's presentation. In this case, I think we can control, so this was just for an open meeting. Uh, these rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing, giving every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no individual is annoyed or embarrassed by exercising his or her right of speech. Uh, I would, I would like to hand it over to staff uh, and basically describe to uh, to tonight's uh, public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so let me, apologies, let me get my screen straight here, we got a lot going on. So tonight we'll be looking at LEWAY two thousand twenty-three dash zero 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 three, which is a um, application for a rezone, the CPM mining expansion rezone. Um, the presentation will be formatted as such, uh, we will start with a project background and a little bit on the location of the proposed rezone. Uh, the policy regulatory framework, including a review of the comprehensive plan, SEPA, applicable zoning codes, changes to developmental, uh, development standards and allowed uses. And finally, the findings and conclusions the planning commission will use as a standard for review. Uh, staff will then give our conclusion and recommendation to the planning commission. Before I start, can everybody see this slide? Actually, let me start there.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So project background, the proposed project uh, is for the consideration of a rezone of parcel number one five one four four point zero 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 one from I one light industrial to I two heavy industrial. The consideration of a rezone in this property is provided for under every heights municipal code seventeen point oh three oh seven oh in the process in which rezones may be considered or outlined at our, every heights municipal code seventeen oh three oh eight oh. The parcel in question is located south of Dino Road, north of First Avenue, west of Hayford Road, and east of Craig Avenue. This parcel is kind of difficult to describe where it is, typically we use right of way to describe, you know, to the left, you know, Dino and Hayford Road, the intersections, things like that. But as you can see, there, there is no direct access for a right of way for this parcel. Um, but essentially you're looking at a chunk of land just to the north. Actually, I'm gonna talk about it here in a second, just to the uh, north and east of the ORV park and to the west of the Raceway Park and the casino. Um. This parcel is located adjacent to the current CPM mining aggregate mining operation to the east uh, and the south, so you can kind of see it on the map there, uh, the Spokane County ORV park, and we talked about that. The land to the north of this parcel is vacant, uh, this land does border the city of Airway Heights to the east, uh, but to the north, south, and west, it borders unincorporated Spokane County. Policy regulatory and framework, so per area heads municipal code seventeen oh three oh seven oh A, all zoning map amendments must be consistent with the comprehensive plan and must not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Airway Heights. All reason requests must be reviewed for compliance with the State Environmental Policy Act, which is known as SEPA. Rezones and our government and process, or excuse me, governed in process in accordance with the procedures outlined within seventeen oh three oh seven oh and oh eight oh. An analysis of changes to developmental standards should be considered when reviewing a change in zoning uh, to a particular parcel. An analysis of changing, changes to allowed uses should also be considered when reviewed um, as change in zoning a particular parcel. The planning commission shall not approve or recommend approval of a proposed development unless it's found to be consistent with every heights municipal code fourteen oh oh five oh three oh. So fourteen oh five oh three oh are going to be the items in which you're going to be essentially using as a standard to consider rezoning. Um, we're gonna go over everything beforehand and then we're gonna take what we learned and apply it to those specific questions. So initially, we're going to review the proposal against the comprehensive plan. Uh, there are several policies within the comprehensive plan that apply within this case. The first policy is policy point two. Apply or revise zoning designation with careful consideration of factors, including future land use mapping, compatibility with surrounding land uses, restrictions in Fairchild Air Force Base and other airport overlay zones, infrastructure and service plans, existing and future traffic patterns, goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, related master plans and other facilities plans. So the first item here is for future land use mapping, uh, the comprehensive plan includes a map that basically does a breakdown of parcel by parcel, what the future land use should be. Um, that land, land use associated leads to zoning, in this case, the future land use mapping designation of the parcel is industrial warehouse. Industrial warehouse is served by the I one in the I two zone, so currently the parcel is consistent with the future land use mapping portion of the comprehensive plan. The second item is compatibility with surrounding land uses. The surrounding land uses include again mining to the east and off-road vehicle park to the south and west and vacant land to the north. Uh, due to the isolation and lack of adjacent non-industrial uses, there does not seem to be any major conflict with surrounding land uses. Um, if the request for going to an I two was located next to an apartment complex or um, an R one zone where you have a bunch of, you know, single-family homes, we may not be looking at it. Uh, but since it's a very, very isolated parcel and there's um, no real compatibility issue, um, that's something we're looking at there. Uh, restrictions with Fairchild Air Force Base and Airport Overlay Zones, uh, so this parcel is not located within any of the Fairchild Air Force Base overlays or the Spokane International um, APZ zones as well. Uh, so there's no conflicts there. The fourth piece here is infrastructure and service plans, uh, since this parcel does not have any right-of-way access and the only access to the site is through the adjacent parcel. The ability for city services to access the site is limited. The parcel is currently vacant, and there's a very limited infrastructure within the general vicinity, minus an underground gas line that runs through the parcel. Um, existing and future traffic patterns, since the site does not contain any transportation infrastructure, either public or private, nearest access again is over a quarter of a mile away, the consideration of traffic on the sites not really relevant. Uh, the goals and policies and comprehensive plan related master plan or any other facility plans uh, is provided with the full analysis provided within the staff report, that's kind of what we're doing here. The second policy within the comprehensive plan that we will review this is policy ten, which calls for the city to prioritize location of new industrial developments in areas that provide close proximity to major transportation corridors, uh, citing near existing industrial uses where possible, cost-effective access to utility and services, and the ability to minimize trucks through residential areas. So in response to that, industrial areas have already been considered on this property, again, it's zoned I one, it's already an industrial zoning, so you're just going from an I one to a more intense zone and an I two. Um. The policy ten again calls for considerations of the following factors, close proximity to major transportation corridors, citing near existing industrial areas. Um, the site is adjacent to I two heavy industrial zone parcels and associated uses. Um, it actually only borders in I, I two zone parcels within the city of Airway Heights. The zoning outside of the city of Airway Heights, I believe, is an RT, which is a rural traditional, but since we don't govern that, I'm not too focused on that. Uh, access is limited again due to the geography of the site, um. It would be really, really difficult to get to that site without going through the existing um, ownership, which is the parcel adjacent off of Sprague Avenue. Assuming connection through adjacent parcels, again, the site does have the ability to minimize trucking through the residential areas. Uh, the State Environmental Policy Act, so every project that triggers what's called again SEPA is required to go through environmental review. Uh, in this case, we uh, did issue a determination on significance on March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. This determination was based off of public comments that were received, um, we did not receive any comments of any major significance prior to the issuance of the SEPA determination. That being said, uh, all determinations do require a public comment period. Uh, during that public comment period, um, there were two comments received, one on March thirtieth and one on April sixth. The comment on March thirtieth was from Spokane Parks and Recreation. Uh, it had to do with limiting uh, noise and during nighttime hours. Uh, the comment is specific to a use and not necessarily the zoning. The zoning can change on that parcel and it wouldn't generate any additional noise. So what we're going to do with that comment is review it again when the second part of this application comes back around. Um, again, today we're just looking at the rezoning of the parcel. When we go back and look at the proposed use, which is mining, we will take a look at that and, you know, probably have some mitigation or we'll review it at that time. The second comment came from the Spokane Tribe of Indians, uh, they were requesting a cultural survey be done on the project, which is a pretty typical um, comment to receive uh, within parcels of a certain size in Airway Heights. Uh, again, the, the applicant has agreed in writing to um, to do the uh, the cultural survey, but we're going to be looking at that out on the CUP as opposed to the SEPA. So as of right now, those two comments will be addressed later, but they will not be addressed in the SEPA uh, and the determination and non-significance uh, is standing as now. Sorry, uh, it writes me this boat seventeen point oh three oh seven oh and oh eight oh discuss when the city can consider amending its zoning title and who can initiate a zoning amendment. In this case, the amendment is being proposed by an individual property owner, which is allowed. The zoning title, which is everybody has been spoke code title seventeen um, provides a specific chapter for each zone, so in this case, we're looking at seventeen point thirteen and seventeen point twelve. Uh, to given a general idea of the differences of where you're, where you're at, where you're going to, we provided an analysis between the two. Um, the intent of the I one light industrial zone is, is significantly different than the I two heavy industrial zone. Uh, the I one zone is more focused on clean, quiet industrial development, and the I two zone calls for a more intense use by nature. The I one zone essentially sees um, more office buildings that support heavy industrial, think of um, like the, the out, um, the Caterpillar building or something like that, where you have an office building, but it's associated with an industrial use. Um, industrial I two, which is the heavy industrial zone, actually calls for items, you know, mining and um, processing, uh, that sort of thing, having factories, that kind of an idea. So although seventeen thirteen oh one oh calls for the I two zone to be primarily located south of highway two, it actually specifies that within that section. Uh, there is an existing uh, concentration of I two zone parcels located adjacent to this parcel on the northern side of the city, so I already mentioned this, but um, the all, right now that parcel is zoned I one, but all of the surrounding zoning around it is I two. Um, due to its location, adjacent zoning and lack of access to services and utilities, it's hard to imagine this parcel would have the ability to develop to meet the intent of the I one line industrial zone anytime in the near future. Um, and I keep going back to this idea of the isolation of the parcel, but trying to obtain what's being asked of the I one zone and that parcel right now without having any access to any streets, any access to any, you know, significant utilities is very, very difficult to see and would not be available for a very long time, that, that parcel is not within any of the long-term plans uh, for utility or street access um, within the city of everybody has long-term planning right now, so. Uh. This is a breakdown of the differences within the development standards, so we're looking at things like minimum lot size setbacks, coverages, so just little ticky tacky stuff, I wanted to quickly go over it. Uh, the mini, minimum lot area in front edges are identical, so there's gonna be no change in going from an I one to an I two. Uh, the setbacks are a little bit different and it, it's detailed on this slide, but it's also detailed within the staff report, but not significant enough to really spend any more time on. Uh, coverages and heights are both identical within the I one and I two, the parking and sign standards do not apply specifically to either zone, so they would be applied exactly the same. Uh, one of the main differences has to do with landscaping, uh, the level intensity of the required landscaping for screening is increased for areas within the I two zone, which makes sense if you think about it. Uh, when located adjacent to residential or commercial zones, the screening requirement goes from a type-two visual buffer to a type-one screen. So again, if you, on, on the case you have a residential house located adjacent to an I two zone, that you, they would be required, when they developed it, they would be required to put additional landscaping in to kind of screen that use from the residents. Uh, this is a breakdown of the differences between the storage standards, um, the language is a bit different, they're pretty similar. One of the main differences, and I'm going to go over some of the changes in allowed uses a little later, but one of the main differences between the I one and I two for uses that we see a lot within the city, or at least we see a lot of requests for, are the I one requires what's called a conditional use permit, I've, I've spoken to that a couple of times, but essentially it's an additional step um, in allowing for a use that may have additional mitigation requirements for it. Uh, the conditional use permits are reviewed by a third-party hearings examiner, so it's not something we do in-house, we bring in a third-party uh, to review and make sure that um, what we're doing is fair, um, in this case, uh, outdoor storage requires a conditional use permit in the I one, so again, it's kind of a borderline use. Uh, but within the I two, it is um, it is outright allowed with, with screening, of course, both of these would require screening. So we're gonna go over a couple of these, I'm not gonna go over every single one because it's a little too thick and I don't want to bore everybody. But um, I did do an analysis on the changes of what would be allowed within the I two zone versus what is allowed in the I one town. So this first, these first two slides here um, detail the detail the uses that are allowed within the I one and are also allowed within the I two, so there, there would be no change, they could put these in today if they wanted to and they will be able to put them in if you, they decide to go to I two. Um, again, I'm not gonna, I'll give you a second to look through them, but highlights, you're looking at, you know, auto painting and repair, machine shops, lumberyards, building supply stores, brewery warehouses. Um. A majority of the uses aren't going to change between an I one and an I two. This is just another another list, that's the same one, it's just additional uses, as you can see, it's a pretty long list of, of uses that are not going to change. This list is permitted within the I one, not permitted within the I two. So these items cemetery, golf course, uh, gym, hotel, kennels, medical services, um, resorts, uh, training schools, gymnastics, stuff like that um, are allowed within the I one, would not be permitted with the I two, so they would go from today, they could put one in hypothetically, um, but they would not be able to do it if they went to an I two. And these uses are, they tend to congregate groups of people, and that's kind of the big change here, is you're seeing these uh, these uses that tend to take up a lot of space, but they're bringing people in. This second. Sorry, there we go, they all look the same. So the second list here is not permitted within the I one, permitted within the I two, so this is uses that they would now be allowed to do, um, but they would not have been allowed to do within the I one. Um, this would be, again, you're, you're, you look at these, you're seeing more industrial intense uses that get away from congregations of people. So you're seeing uses that are, are, are more intense industrially, but have less people there to actually interact with them. So dry kiln, gas elimination, rolling mill, all sorts of uh, industrial uses here. These are a list of uses that require conditional use permit both within the I one and the I two, so you're seeing no change in these whatsoever, it doesn't matter what zone you're in, you will need a CUP. Uh, this is airstrip, uh, electrical component manufacturing assembly. Uh, again, manufacturing for electrical uh, machinery, uh, secure community transition facility, service station automobile and, and blow ground, that's for storage of critical materials. And then this last list here are uses that are not allowed within the I one, but require a CUP within the I two. So these typically tend to be the most um, industrial heavy uses we have on our use table that are allowed within the city. Um, you're seeing things like rock crushing, mining, sewage slung, sled land applications, auto wrecking. Um, these are uses that even within the I two zone, they may require additional mitigation, so we take them through a conditional use permit process. And this list is allowed within the I one and is a conditional use permit within the I two. Uh, so these are just two uses tavern and entertainment recreation facility, including bingo hall, dance hall, skating ring. Um, their uses that you can say are um, they support the industrial areas out there, but they're something that's pretty limited because most of the infrastructure around it isn't designed for this type of a use. And this last list is a conditional use permit within the I one outright permitted within the I two. So this is a list of uses um, that you're gonna see that are kind of borderline within the I one, but make more sense within the I two zone, so we, we feel we can have them in the I one zone with maybe some additional mitigation, but within the I two zone, they are outright permitted, so you're seeing things like metal fabrication, firewood sales, auction yard, assembly, stuff like that, so again, these are more industrial uses. So planning commission review, um, so this goes back to where we're at at the beginning of the presentations, the planning commission shall not approve or recommend approval of a proposed development unless it first makes the following findings and conclusions. Um, so these criteria are what you will be reviewing this application material on. Um, is it consistent with um, these five different criterias, the first criteria, the development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the requirements intent of the developmental code. So this was discussed earlier when we talked about the comprehensive plan. Staff believes uh, that the action is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that the intent of the I two zone is more realistic to obtain uh, than the intent, intent of the I one zone. Number two, the development makes adequate provisions for open space drainage ways, streets, and other public ways, transit stops, water supply, sanitary waste, parking recreation facilities, playgrounds, sites for schools, and school grounds, and other public utilities. Uh, number two, the application, again, we're just looking at the rezone piece on this. Uh, so there's no specific development being considered at this time. Uh, there, this provision doesn't really apply to just a rezone. Uh, number three, uh, the development adequately mitigates adverse environmental impacts identified during environmental review under chapter eighteen point oh one. Um, again, we did issue a determination on significance on this, and we determined that there were no si- uh, significant eh, environmental impacts per this uh, this rezone. Number four, the development is not harmful to the public health, safety, and welfare and is, and is within the public interest. So um, the part property is not located adjacent to any developments, residences, or uses that may have significant impacts on the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Airway Heights. Since the land is isolated from other uses, did not have any connection to existing transportation networks and is not featured in any future development plans for the city of every heights, it seems likely that if the zoning remains the same, development of this land is uh, within the near future is highly likely. Uh, as mentioned previously, the proposal to reason the property has been identified as consistent with the comprehensive plan and therefore should be seen as within the public interest. Number five, uh, the development does not lower the level of service of transportation and or neighboring park facilities below the minimum standards established within the comprehensive plan. If the development results in a level of service lower than those set forth within the comprehensive plan, the development may be approved if improvements or strategies to raise the level of service above the minimum standard are made concurrent with the development. For the proposal, transportation improvements concurrency with developments defined as a requirement, so uh, in this case, um, the proposal does not currently have any direct access to a transportation network. It would most likely be accessed through the adjacent parcel with shared ownership, transportation impacts will be reviewed at time of proposed use review, so not during, uh, again, the, the proposed use uh, including transportation concurrency, the proposal should not have an impact on the neighborhood parks facilities within the city of Airway Heights. And number six, and the final one, the area and location of the land proposed for dedication are directors of the development proposal and are reasonably needed to mitigate the effects of the development and are proportional to the impacts created by the development. In this case, there are no um land dedications associated with this rezone request. So that is another feature that doesn't necessarily apply. In conclusion, uh the rezone application has been found by staff to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And is not identified as detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Airway Heights. Uh city staff recommends approval of L U A twenty twenty three dash zero 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 three C P M mining request. And with that, I will hand it back to Cal.
Thank you, Zach. Uh Zach, the format of the presentation was very good tonight. Uh. You know, first time I've seen it in this kind of detail. And it's great. I hope you keep it up this way because it was very clear. That um the standards were presented to the. Commissioners and etc and also the staff's view. So normally we only see. Large documents sent to us uh weeks before, and I think a lot of people miss out on this, but this was excellent. I hope you keep uh this format going forward. Uh it will be very easy. For everybody to make a decision and understand what's happening. So it was very good. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Cal. Uh I understand, uh you know, there are a couple of our commissioners that. Um you know, do not have a ton of experiences. So I wanted them to have the opportunity to uh understand the whole process. So we we can definitely.
If you can keep it up this way, it'll be nice, even though they become mavericks at this. But it it's it's a great uh what format. I think it was really clear. What the objective tonight is and 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 all the related um. Rules and regulations. So that's great. So I'd like to uh open up to the applicant to make any comments if they do. Uh who. So presenting the applicant. Oh, hi. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Elizabeth Tellison at Witsen Ekashay here for C P M development. And I echo your comments. Zach has done a wonderful job evaluating what we have put forward. Um one of the items that. I just want to assure the planning commission so that you do know what we are proposing. Um there were concurrent applications for the rezone and the conditional use permit. For the expansion of the mining use. Which is what the Growth Management Act contemplates as well as C P A. That when you know what your plan is, that you put all of those steps and parts and pieces together. In the same application so they can be evaluated together. And for that reason, the C P A threshold determination of non-significance covers both the rezone. And the conditional use permit. The city's development code does. Place the rezone consideration on a little bit different decision track than the conditional use permit. So that's why it seems a little bit disjointed that we're talking about only the rezone. Instead of the rezone with the intended use, which is an expansion of the aggregate mine. And so with that in mind, um just a little. Background for some of the folks that might be new to the area or new to the commission. The um C P M aggregate mine has been active since the late nineties. The two parcels and Zach, do I have screen sharing?
Zach.
Oh, you should be good now, Elizabeth. Sorry.
Okay, thanks. Just for a little bit of lay of the land, um this. Parcel to the south is actively being mined. This parcel immediately to the north that's highlighted here is under common ownership. Did undergo a zoning change in two thousand ten. To go from an industrial zone to a mining zone in the city. And then the city went through and adjusted its zoning again so that it became industrial again, although it does have. Um a non-conforming acceptance to the mining use. So both of these parcels will be um furthered for the mining purpose as well as the new subject parcel that we're talking about today. So just to kind of get the lay of the land, these uses have been in place in the city of Airway Heights for a couple of decades now. Um C P M and with me tonight are a few of the um C P M representatives. John Madden will speak a little bit to their existing operations. But. C P M really does pride itself on being a good neighbor, not only to its immediate neighbors, but to its community. And so in that vein. Uh we do ask that this rezone be approved so that the mining can continue, so that these resources can continue to support. The development of Airway Heights. With those items in mind and to echo a lot of what Zach has already covered. We do find that this application is consistent with your current comprehensive plan. We also offer that it is consistent with the Growth Management Act that does direct counties and cities. To do what they can to preserve these natural resources. And in this instance, as you all know, mining is um not. A never-ending resource. It does get used, it gets exhausted, and once the use has been exhausted. These parcels will become available for further development of some fashion and really. For the city's benefit in long-range planning. To consider the possibility that they will become available for additional recreational use, given their um vicinity. Um to the existing O R V park and the raceway. Um potentially for future home development as the capital facilities continue to develop through the city. So this approval that we are asking you to make or recommendation for approval is really to allow us to. Continue the existing operations, utilize the resources that are available. Um in this region, and particularly within the city, to allow future development. And allow these parcels to transition to another use further down the line. Um, excuse me. With that, um. In the memo that I submitted in support of the application, there are a couple of. Minor additions that we would ask that you consider for your findings when you make those. Um principally that. This rezone is consistent with the Growth Management Act. And that there is a concurrent application for the conditional use permit that does specify exactly what the use is intended to be. So that there isn't a surprise, there isn't any uncertainty on why. This request is being made, and I'm getting over a cold, so I'm trying not to break out into a cough, so excuse me. Um and then we, of course, ask that you approve this rezone, and then we will proceed with the conditional use permit process. Um I will turn it over to Mr. Madden to speak a little bit to the operations that presently exist, unless any of you have questions for me.
Any commissioners have any questions for Elizabeth? Before I move on to the next speaker. Thank you Elizabeth very much for giving us a background. And I'd like to uh have Mr. John Madden speak now, please.
All right. Hello. Hello, everybody. I'm uh John Madden. Address fifty one zero seven Spokane, Washington. Believe I'm supposed to do that. Um anyhow, I'm the general manager for Central Premix and Inland Asphalt here in Spokane. Um our two companies here have been operating in the Spokane area since the nineteen thirties. Uh just a little little background history you might find interesting. Our original batch plant site was on Division Street. Just north of the Spokane River. On that rock pile that the Holiday Inn um sits on now. So just just in an example of of some of the things that. Uh how we transition over the years once we move on. We that was operating until the early eighties. The primary uh gravel source for that for our concrete and. And such was coming from our Fort Wright facility, which was on Government Way. Which is now the uh Life Center Church and a large housing development called River Rock. So. Um anyhow, we operate here in Spokane as a central premix inland asphalt, and then we have a sister company. Called Interstate, and we're all part of a corporation called C R H. Um like Elizabeth said, we were mining there in the uh in the nineteen nineties. Um and in two thousand eight, we bought the uh the second parcel to the north. Um and then uh. Really about two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we were very active in that site with uh portable rock crushing and asphalt on occasion. We bring in a portable asphalt plant. Um about the two thousand nine, two thousand tens, we all went through the Great Recession. Really kind of pulled back our operations there. And over about the next ten years, we were only in there two or three times for for specific projects. At Spokane International Airport or Fairchild. Or a Washington D O T type of projects, but um. Starting in two thousand eighteen, the uh the market started picking up again and um. You know, just it's not economical, it's not good for the for the consumer or or a business. We were hauling. All our concrete rock from uh the state line. Um out to Airway Heights to service that market. So made sense to open up the operation again. And so we started uh bringing portable crushers in, and what we're doing right now is it's. Uh once to one to two times a year, bring in a portable crusher, put up. Um gravel inventory to to service the market, um stockpile it. Um our our access to the market is on Sprague Road on the south end of our of our property. Primarily, um we hit uh Payford Road from Sprague and. And you know, either north or south from there is the way our primary route to the market is from the pit. Um. Let's see, the uh the the material there is 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 high quality for both concrete and asphalt. It's a great road-based material and 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 um and with this business, the material business is very. Transportation-driven and. You guys are all aware, there's been a lot of growth in Airway Heights and um in West Spokane. So it's been a good location for. For the consumers and for and for our business. So. Um the uh the operation itself, I'd say we bring in portable crushers the uh since two thousand eighteen, it's. One to two times per year. They're usually there for. Two to three months at a time and um. And then we just run the the facility with a uh. A loader operator and a scale person and then third-party trucks come in and haul materials to uh. Concrete plant, a local concrete plant, and then to uh to the market around their way heights in West Spokane. Um you say it's very transportation-driven market, so uh location means a lot as far as transportation costs, environmental considerations. And obviously. If you're trucks on the road, the safer it is for traveling public. Um. Let's see, um currently, we're working around the the pipeline that runs through the southern twenty acres that we're. We are hoping that uh we will give the proper zoning and conditional use permit to mine. Um we worked with the pipeline owner Marathon Oil on mitigating. The uh, you know, the the haul trucks up and over that. Um the. Uh the the anyhow, we're uh and we'll continue that with the same plan as we as we mine to the north. We'll continue to stockpile on the south part of the property. That is the closest to our customers, uh it limits their trips to the pits and the length of their trips through the pits. Um. Helps with our dust suppression, which our dust suppression plan is primarily water, which we uh. We are getting the recycle water from the city of Airway Heights. For our uh for our our water trucks that we run through the pit. Um. See, the uh the market itself, I mean, this this is we're proposing, we think there's approximately nine hundred thousand tons there. Um it's been a a pretty, pretty good market. I've been doing this for a long time. And the market's been really good the last three or four years. If it continues like this, we would potentially. Um mine through this material in three or four years, or you know, it depends what what happens with the economy. It could be longer than that, obviously. Um and see, the the material that we've been in is excellent. Excuse me, was there a question?
No, I think it was interference. Carry on.
Okay. Um yeah, the like you say, the 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 equipment or the material that we've been mining in so far has been excellent and. And it just makes logical sense that this would be excellent too. So. Um does anybody have any questions for me?
Uh I'd like to ask the commissioners if anybody want to ask him, John, any questions? Yeah, I wanted to ask you a question. It's nothing to do with the decision of. She allowing the zoning. Just 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 for hearsay. When do you plan to start mining this uh new new? Uh land that you propose to change into L two? It's nothing to do with the decision that we're gonna make tonight.
Think probably the most sense would be to start mining it in the next. Approximately uh twelve to eighteen months.
Okay. Anybody have.
Work our way north.
Oh, sorry. Carry on. Sorry.
Actually, I had one question regarding the uh the portable rock crusher. When they do operate, what what are the hours of the day that they operate?
Um they're usually. It depends on how busy they are and how um where they need to be next. They're usually seem to be in a hurry. So they'll usually run in the six A M to ten P M type of range. They usually run two shifts. They try to get as much up as they can in a quick amount of time and get on to the next job.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for John? Uh thank you, John, very much for giving us some background information. Uh. If there's no other further questions for the uh the applicant. Uh Zach, do we have anybody from the public?
Uh there there are several people here. I haven't heard or seen anything in the chat, but you may want to address and see if they have any comments or questions or regarding the proposal. So it's like a Jeremiah and a Bellingson for the two.
Uh this is a Cal, but uh anybody in the public have any? Comments they want to make in reference to this uh L one to L two zoning change? If you do, please indicate in the chat. So Zach can allow you to speak. I'm gonna leave it open for about thirty seconds. Is that thirty seconds? Sometimes thirty seconds seems a long time.
Uh we have no further comments from Jeremiah.
All right, then let's um. Let's basic uh let's uh open up the. Um. Comments to the commissioner for discussion on this matter. Uh if any commissioners want to make any comments. Or any any questions they have, I would like to open it up. And just remember one thing, the objective tonight. Is not to decide what they're gonna do that. The objective is to go from L one to L two. And as far as uh. What happens on the site later on, there is gonna be a third-party uh person looking into the conditional permit. And if there is any issues in reference to noise or. Working hours or whatever will be addressed there, but I don't think it's our responsibility tonight to look into that. But as I I say that, anybody has any comments or any views, please speak up, okay?
No, I don't have anything. This seems pretty straightforward. The way it's been laid out by city, consistent with all of our goals and all the regulations in the city. This seems pretty straightforward to me.
Any other commissioners have any comments, questions, concerns? I just want to make sure everybody's covered, okay, before we move forward.
No, I I agree with Mark after reviewing the documents and Zach's most excellent review. Uh yeah, I think it's all pretty straightforward myself.
Yes, Zach did a great job tonight. Zach, thank you very much. It was very, very clear, you know, it didn't leave any doubts in anybody's minds or questions. So I hope you keep doing this moving forward. Okay, let me see what my procedure says, what I gotta do next. Yes.
Now, there if there's no additional um conversation, you you can uh close the public hearing and then. Move forward with the motion.
I like I like to close the, if there's no further comments or any uh questions or anything, I like to close the. Hearing at six. Hearing at six fifty P M.
I want to make a motion to approve L U A twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three, changing the land use from an I one to an I two.
Mark, sorry. So there's a, there's a sample motion on the screen, so it actually will be a resolution to the. City council recommending the adoption of the changes. So if, if you do want to make the result, the resolution, or excuse me, the motion.
Recommending, right.
Yeah, the.
Okay, I'll make them, I'll make a motion to move to approve P C resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine. Recommending to the city council, the adoption of the amendments to the zoning map.
Somebody want to second that?
Second.
And all in favor?
I.
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 Zach, for record, all, all, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you, uh, Elizabeth and John. For participating tonight, and I think also we have Daniel, our attorney of the city. Thank you for joining tonight, uh, to give us support. Uh, if we, um, so we're gonna move on. We don't have any uh, action items tonight. We don't have a workshop. Uh, I am gonna open up for commissioners' reports, if any commissioners want to have a report this, this month.
I don't have anything, Cal.
No, if nobody has any reports, I just like to take a few minutes to uh. Thank the city of airway heights, the. People of airway heights for giving me a good opportunity to serve on the board. Uh, for the last, uh, I think it's eight or nine years. No, I don't know, eighty years. And I'll be resigning as of tonight, so I'll have, uh, you'll have to pick a new commissioner for the next meeting if you don't want to do that tonight, right, Zach?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll do that at a later time.
All right, no problem. So that's, that's me. Uh. Anybody else have anything to say? If not, I'd like to move to staff reports.
Uh, well, well, thanks, Cal. Um, you've been here the entire time I've been here and you've been a, a rock on the planning commission and uh. Um, I can't, I, I mean, unfortunately Heather's not here, but of course, you know, we really, really appreciate everything you've done and. The commission is less without you and uh, next time, you know, you're in town, um, I would love to buy you a copy.
Definitely. Thank you.
Make sure you keep that, that hat. We got you that one Christmas during that, you know, pandemic thing.
Wow, that's gonna be hard to find that now.
Well, we'll, we'll see what we can do. Um, so uh, just real quick on staff reports, I won't keep everybody here um, all night. As, as you can see, Heather's not here. She is, um, actually she's in Egypt right now. Um, so she's gone for about three weeks. Uh, so she's having a great time. So. Good for her. Uh, what I was gonna say, um, so next meeting, I've talked to, I think, three or four of you. Um, about this, but I'm going to put a uh, discussion and probably an action item on the next meeting to discuss the formatting and the meetings moving forward. Um, I believe we do have the ability to move to a hybrid format and, and most of you have expressed interest in doing so. So. Um, we will have that conversation next month. Um. We have kick-started our comprehensive plan uh, back up again. It was kind of in limbo for a while. Uh, we're in the process of finishing that up, so we may have some free enough next month. If not, definitely the following month. And then over the summer, we'll be doing some heavy hitting, going over some long-term uh, land use options. Uh, I mentioned last week, or excuse me, last month, House Bill one ten, eleven ten. Uh, that is going back to the house, the state house right now for essentially final approval before uh, the governor's signature. So we're expecting that to pass. Um, that's going to have some significant long-term uh, planning consequences. It's going to essentially take every single, single-family uh, lot we have in the city and make it a minimum of the duplex. Uh, so we're gonna have to do some serious planning around that to get really excited about that, but um, that looks like it's, it's gonna pass, it's gonna go through, so we're expecting that. Um, other than that, um. We're working on a ton of other projects. I don't have anything kind of uh, juicy for you right now, but just know that we're working on stuff. Um, I am working on doing updates to the G I S system. I've actually been able to spend some time on that um, this month. So uh, probably either next month or the month after, I'll bring all that and we'll do a presentation. Uh, and we'll talk about what the implications are and I'll walk you through it. So it's a tool that you can all use because as you're making land use decisions. At least for me, I'm a map guy, so I like, you know, visualization. So. Um, that's it. But again, Cal, uh, we're gonna miss you. We really appreciate all the uh, the work you've done for the city and um, hope you're having a good time on the East Coast.
All right, thank you. Uh, if there's no other further comments or discussion, I would like to adjourn the meeting at. Six fifty-five P M.
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. You made it through your first public hearing. Yay.
Nice. It was good. But I think uh, I think your format was excellent, so I, this is the first time I've seen that, so keep it up.
Yeah, yeah, no, well, uh.
Very, very clear, you know.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.